Like.
He had walked the whole and and being he didn't.
Kid, I couldn't wait.
He was hiding for people.
Wasn't that's like three miles on the shoreline.
You're surprised, you know.
But you may as well, but just the fear.
Toast, you know, it's either hitting in the boats at El Barrio, you know, getting pitched between there, you know. Or come out and get your kid. You know, it would be in some town, never know, but. That was.
Ah.
I think it was.
That's. I just remember some kid got hit by lightning or something off there several years. For a boat, kid didn't, kid didn't go.
Yeah, there were some things. Brother and I were. Hope he can't even sail. Oh, I'm going to see. Coming around. Right. And we was getting close to sunset and all of a sudden. Yeah. Actually six. And. What the hell did you do? And you kind of popped boat up and he's like, what's going on? We kind of flipped.
Yeah.
And it's like. And then the thing turtle, oh, man, it's gonna be nasty. I'd never seen way so big. Then came up with wind cut under here, guys, put it kind of back on the sun just from trampoline. Really small thing came up and flipped it over. Grabbed rope back first, I initially tangled something. Now what? I just got a foot. It all looks like he says hit him with the water ski. The sailor. It took off, I estimated went pile down this side. You thought the mass is gonna hit point Detroit because we were just about thirty yards fifty yards. We barely have anything to end the swim in there. He said. He just canceled the insurance on the last week. There's my boat, you know, down there. Just on tune with no top end, just thirteen people. We got point three, otherwise we were.
All the meeting to order. Um, please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Do not sit there. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under agenda changes, does anybody have anything? Um, I do. Um. Anthony, what's your last name, Anthony? Anthony's here. De Soto. Um, he's looking for information. He's got some property, um, just outside of Roscommon, the village. And he, he, he's looking for information on what he can do on that property. It's it's zone C two commercial. Um, so he's looking for answers. He doesn't really have anything to present at this time. Um, so I would ask that we add him just under new business discussion. That sound good to everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'll make a move that we, uh, amended agenda, adding Anthony to new business. Is there a second? Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion's approved.
What now is Val? Have you heard from him? Have you heard from Val?
Uh, no, I have not.
His car was in the driveway, so I. Okay.
No, I didn't hear anything from him. Uh, approval of the minutes, uh, June twelfth, two thousand twenty five. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So.
Set. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same. Motion carries. Okay, our current business, um. What's that?
You asked for public comment? You did skip that, I think.
I did? Oh, yeah, I did skip public comment. Public comment. None? Okay. Um, master plan review update. Uh, as you know, we received another proposal from the McKenna group. Um. And we, and we still have the one, of course, from the Nemco, the Northeast Michigan Council of Governments. Um, did anybody have any comments or thoughts regarding either plan?
Well, I will just give you a rundown. At last meeting, he asked me to contact all of them. Wade Trim verbally told me they weren't, they were just too busy. And I'd ever heard from the Spicer Group at all. Um, um, both counts, the first time and the second. So I believe these are our only two that.
This is what we have to work.
What you got is what you're good to get.
Good.
I know.
Turn your mic on. Your mic on.
So I'm a little bit familiar with these because Susan worked with the Nemco for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And, uh, and she had a good experience working with him. But we expected that the McKenna proposal would be a lot more money because Nemco does things fairly cheaply. And the fact that their proposal was a thousand dollars less than Nemco was a surprise. And and a pleasant surprise because I liked their presentation better than Nemco's. Um, and I like the fact that the person who's going to be responsible for the project if we went with them was someone named Jane Dixon, who's also familiar with Higgins Lake and Gharish Township. So I think that gives her a little bit of a heads up and an understanding of what's going on. Um, what I didn't understand in both proposals that I read were the same was that they tell you the people that would be working likely with your, um, project. But they don't really give you a lot of information about their backgrounds other than what they did. But they don't tell you timing wise how long they did it. So I mean, some of those people could have been doing those things for another company. Some of those people could have been doing those things for two months or six months, something like that. So I, I guess if we have to look further into this and we have a phone conversation with somebody, I'd, I'd like to know what that was. And also I'd like to know, um, if any of these people drop out. You know, like who's in the wings for them? They, they Nemco listed a lot of people. Um, I don't know what McKenna's depth is, although they do have offices in in other places too. Um, other than their head office being in Northville. But, um, in any case, I just wanted to say that I liked the McKenna presentation. But what I also found interesting was when I went to look at the places they mentioned to see the master plans that they had done. There were five different communities listed and I could only find one where they actually had the master plan on their website. And I would say this, it doesn't have as many pictures or like imaginative creation in there as their own presentation did. It was just, you know, line and line and page after page of facts and 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 it was all fine. It's just that I would have expected there since I saw their presentation to have more pictures or something like that. There was nothing in that. But and I already explained this to Tom. I did find out that, uh, Montague is the home of the world's largest weather vane. So in case that's of any help. That's really all I had.
You saying we want to go for a bigger one?
I, I don't know if we could. I'm surprised though. Right here in Michigan, the world's largest weathering. The it and the, uh, McKenna's schedule seemed to be shorter than Nemco's. It was twelve months rather than fifteen to prepare the same, um, project. And I just wonder how that works, you know, for us. Do we have any concerns about that or? You know, if, if we were granting one of these proposals, the object, uh, for them to work on what we're doing. When would we intend to have that started?
My intent would be as soon as possible. I wait, I mean, there's.
Yeah.
We gain nothing by waiting. Um, you know, the sooner we can make a decision or are we just making a recommendation to the to the township board?
This, this board can't encumber the, uh, township, so we'd have to make a recommendation. Right township board would act on it. I suppose if you were really interested in moving forward, uh, and we decided on that tonight. It could, I could see if Brian would be willing to put that on our Tuesday night agenda, but that doesn't give our board much time to review if they she choose to do that. Um, both of these entities have positive and negatives in their own rights. The price, you're right, the price is pretty reasonable. Nemco just keep buying, did not bid. Nemco gave us a proposal because they will not compete. So they just, I had to ask them to just give us a proposal. It, it wasn't a competitive bid. The other company is a for-profit company. And so their timelines are going to be tighter because I can tell you as a consultant. Time is money. So you, you, you're going to have an incentive to roll things right along. They don't, they don't, they they don't want something dragging. They don't want to get paid. Nemco that works at their old pace is a little bit different. But both, both are have pros and cons and on both. You know, on their own merits. And so I guess short answer on timeline, it'd be either either you move it forward by this Tuesday, if you wanted to really push that, or you're gonna be waiting a month or, uh, or we have a special meeting at the township with one comes up and vote on it then.
What about this, Jim? Um, neither one of them really talked about how they get paid. In other words, i- if we started them, let's say at the end of September and some of these, uh, project pieces are done, do they expect to get paid or they haven't mentioned it, but would they expect to get paid? Like piece by piece until it's over or is there some interim that they would get paid a certain percentage and then some later or any idea?
I don't know how relevant that is, but you know, if most consultants will require a down payment with the, you know, acceptance of the contract. I didn't notice. I didn't read that close enough, but I would assume that they would be doing interim billings as they go.
Okay.
You know, rather than.
Well, if you look back at the McKenna estimated cost, they list out the, their task. You know, they broke it down to seven tasks with the final one being adoption and the other one kickoff. And they actually had an itemized fee associated with each one of those tasks. So they could look at and say, we've completed this chapter, blah, 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 and.
They also said the second sentence under fee said, we propose to complete for the project for a lump sum of twenty-three fifty. So I don't know if that means it's a one.
That's kind of what I thought too. The only thing of any reference was.
No, but I mean, they might break their lump.
They might break. They may.
By these action items.
That could be a question for them. I mean, do they do intermittent billing, billing or do they?
Find out when.
Yeah.
Okay, if we want to.
Now, the Nemco, they did a lot of, uh, up north work. You know, they did recreation plans in Okona, Alpine, Sheboygan, Crawford, you know, they did in others and they've done a lot of zoning ordinances, you know. Okona, Alpine, atrium. Uh, Calhoun, Sheboygan, Crawford, Emmett, Gladwin. So they know this area very, very well. You know, too. So they have a lot of experience up here. So that was just one thing I noticed, um, I thought was important, but I also did like what you brought, uh, Jane, uh, she is from here or she, or she, she knows.
Lot of experience or.
Got personal experience.
Personal experience. So that's huge too.
The other thing about Nemco was they listed a lot of things that they do, but they really weren't particular to our project. That's just how they present things. I think they want everybody to know what they do. So it's like a twenty-page document and the last two pages were all that they talked about, which was of my interest.
Right.
Whereas the, the Nemco or the McKenna was pretty much all about doing a project for Gears Township.
So for full disclosure, I know Jane. She was a neighbor of mine. So I've known her since she was a little kid. And I hadn't seen her in a few years and actually over the fourth she was up and um, I said, how you doing? She goes, I just sent a proposal in.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. And it had no idea. So, um, but I do know her. I've known her since she was very young. Yeah.
Enzo, you would recommend her?
Well, me, I don't know her, her work professionally, but I, I'm a very impressive person. Yes.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't, we're not actually in the Nemco district. Uh, Nemco is northeast Michigan, which we're just below that. We're actually in the eastern Michigan district. But they do work across those lines is my understanding. At least they did with the Parks and Rec stuff. But and the other thing is their, their principal that they list there, um, is not someone who's ever involved with the project. It's just, that's the highest name on their, uh, org chart.
I think you hit it on the head, uh, Demco's proposal. I'll wager if you went to the next township that they get given one, that first five pages, six, seven pages is the same.
Right.
It's just they put the rest of it behind it. And then Nemco's been around. They've done, they do, you know, pretty decent work. I, I will tell you either one, whatever we pick, uh, it's going to be on us to make sure that we get what we pay for because we don't want cookie cutter approach. We don't, we don't want. Um, you know, just fill in the blanks. We've got to do our due diligence to review and and lead, lead that charge to make sure that we get in there what we want.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the risk you end up having.
Well, both of them do offer um, customization in the sense if, if we feel a certain part of our ordinance is just or our master plan is more or less exactly what we want. They're okay with that, you know, if we say, don't touch that, other just update this or that, they're okay. So you can alacard it, you know, in a sense of word, and they talk about that a little bit. That's why they broke some of these down as a dollar value for these different tasks. I think we'll just end up with a complete rewrite personally, but um, it's nice to know that you, they're willing to work with you if you feel passionate about something that's in there now that you want to see remain or right, um, stay the same as much as possible. Um, your comment about, um, McKenna not really having a lot of the pictures and all that stuff. Um, the old one had none because it's old. They didn't really do that back then. Um, I find that just okay, it, it, it looks pretty, but honestly, I, this, this plan will get done. It'll go on a shelf and this body is probably the one that looks at it the most. You'll get a few developers that will look at it, but, um, and maybe a few homeowners will go look at it and so forth. I don't know. Now that you can see things online, it's totally different and everything, but I'm, I'm okay with that, I guess.
I'm okay with it too. I just thought it was, it was, you kind of read between the lines to see what company's willing to do. And I thought that what McKenna, um, per- performance wise, what they showed us was a little bit more custom than what we got from Nemco. And so kind of getting back to the concept of, you know, what do we want them to do for us and staying on top of them and getting it to be exactly what we want, I think that speaks more highly of, uh, what they'd be able to do. So.
I'd be on board with McKenna for the fact that, uh, he knows the lady who'd be helping run it. And, and she's from this or she knows this area.
I like that. Yeah.
I think that's huge. Because this is a, a special. I mean, we're a resort town, right? We are. That's what we are. And, and you have to kind of be a part of this community, kind of get it, I think. Maybe all communities you do.
It helps. It helps.
It does help. I don't, yeah, I think it helps and I think it's a huge positive.
I, I agree with, uh, majority of the comments and stuff on here. I am partial to McKenna stuff for all the reasons. I think their proposal compared to the other one was a lot or a scale up. And then one of the primary reasons, I think, is they did tailor it to us on there. Um, I think some of the experience stuff we expect from Emco just because they're, that we're kind of reading between the lines, what they have and what they presented. And if you look at just the proposals themselves, I think that you'd go with McKenna for, I would go with McKenna from that standpoint based on what they did, how they did it. I like the fact again that they're the local, but she did tailor the stuff. I think their, their schedule is actually more pertinent and they broke the stuff up in the task.
Right.
And stuff. And I think that timeline, I agree with what Jim said, you know, you're gonna you know, because of this, the differences between the nonprofit and how they do stuff with the big things, you know, that's and, and I don't think that's the driving factor. Um, but I, I like what they had with their, with their, um, schedule. I think with the expertise and stuff, actually looking at them, he's, several of them, they have master's degrees in stuff in urban planning. And, uh, the team that, that from what I read through Emco didn't have some of that experience, you know, at that level. And I know when you do, um, proposals on the government stuff, a lot of times it could be, you know, PhD in three years experience, masters in five or six or bachelor's in ten to twelve, you know, for the same kind of position stuff. So it seemed like education wise, they probably got that, um, you know, a higher level of qualification and that would speak to some of this stuff and not having the actual, um, you know, you know, project, you know, if they were twenty years in this or fifteen years or five or three or whatever.
Okay. Any other comment?
I just mentioned too, when we were looking at the cost sheets, the McKenna proposal was the dollar values for each specific task. And the, and the Nemco, it was kind of general. There's one for meetings, one for expenses, one for administration. It was just generic. You know, costs. I thought to McKenna one said specifically what your, how they broke down the costs. So.
And they are a thousand dollars cheaper too.
Yeah, and they're a thousand dollars cheaper. Yeah.
Well, do we want to, uh, I think we need to send both of these proposals up to the Gares Township Board. Um, do we want to make a recommendation on one or the other?
I think we should.
Yeah, I think it's.
If you're prepared to do it today, then do it. Yeah. Whether they act on it.
Yeah.
I think the way I see is if you or we vote on this today, make a recommendation, pass it to the board. We can, uh, contact the, uh, respective, you know, each of them and thank them for their proposal and, and state that this is being forwarded with this recommendation. And you can't start any process until the board votes on it. I, I really cannot imagine the township board voting contrary to what this planning commission poses. But we, we just would tell the contract doesn't start till that vote happens, whether it's this month or next month.
Can you do that, Mike? You're right to motion?
No, the, um, what he said, just make a note that we'll send a letter of thanks for the submitting the proposal to us, to both.
Oh, um, yeah, I can draft.
So as far as the, as the proposal goes, so I, I would make a motion that we recommend to the Gares Township Board that, that we, uh, uh, go forward with the McKenna proposal for the master.
I'll second that. Okay, I was trying to get the actual wording. That's where I was kind of plucking out here. You want to restate it?
Yeah, I'm trying. I mean, by my, you're recommending the McKenna thing. I was just trying to figure out the, the verbiage on that and then have a couple of points. It doesn't need to be in, in the motion. It could be separate or put there just, we recommend, you know, this based upon X, Y, Z kind of thing, I think, um, the tailor, I think there's if you said the bullets, just to to speak to, I think the one thing that we all agreement that there's a connection with Higgins Lake.
And that their price was, uh.
Yeah, the, the cost is cheaper.
Better than the, uh.
Their presentation, their proposal was tailored to
And it seemed to.
Two Higgins.
And it seemed to have a shorter timeline. So like what Tom said, if we'd like to get it moving as soon as possible, that probably gets it finished as soon as possible. So.
I mean, I think they're more specific with also their.
Yeah, they, they're.
With their, with their, um, their the timeline they had. The timeline and tasks, they broke it up a little differently and I, and some of that I kind of like because then you could kind of if you lumped everything else in, you know, without divvying up in different sections, this way it kind of gives you a way of looking at things too and parses it out.
Let me back up. Motion was made and seconded to recommend the McKenna proposal. Um, all in favor, say. Uh, or no. I need, it was made second. Okay, we're in discussion. Yeah, I got lost it.
Well, in discussion, I think, could it just be as simple as that? And then we attach all these things talking points to. How, what I was doing is, uh, how we did before, and I tried to do it for these last things and then the ZBA. Basically, because I, the actual verbiage of them, I kind of play around with, but the, the general point. I listed those, those bullets. So we list that in the and it's bullets in the minutes. And then for the actual motion, it's just real simple. Then we basically say, we recommend, you know, choosing the the McKenna report to the township board based upon the following considerations, um, in the minutes and in these minutes.
Okay.
So we never know exactly what the motion is until Mike's.
Right, they, uh, we know the intent.
You made the motion, but we don't know.
Right, but I don't know exactly what it'll look like.
We just, we just have to hang out a little bit.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Oppose, the same. Motion carries.
So the, the motion people, who, who made it?
Greg.
Greg, and who seconded?
I seconded. Okay.
Good discussion.
This gets to the township board. Now you're going to write the letter to the two
What do you want to do, Jim? Because you, um.
I don't.
Well, as a secretary, I mean, I, I, I could write a standard letter and provide it to you.
I, I don't mind writing it, but I don't want to step over.
Well, I'm just saying you were the contact originally.
I mean, I have it all on my computer. I just sent them an email.
Well, let's let Jim do it.
Okay.
Want to say yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, so you're done with that. Okay, um, we were going to discuss a little bit more possibly about the septic system ordinance. Um, basically, we still haven't heard anything from the health of Higgins Lake. Um, I don't know. The impression I got is they don't really want us to do anything at this point or keep researching it. I'm not sure. Jim, you're here. Do you?
Still on my position, um, from the health of Higgins Lake. I mean, I believe from the board. I think I can speak to the boards, what their feelings are, is it?
Turn that mic on.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, the, the septic committee from the Health of Higgins Lake is working, um, through just beginning on, uh, what we want to do, what we think we want to do with regard to the, the septic ordinance. Um, sort of the, the this is sort of a G Wiz thing for you, but, uh, sort of the the theme of the committee is to educate the people, um, as, as the first piece is to get some messages out there through Facebook and through the website and, um, the various sources to talk about what to do to your septic, what not to do, you know, that, that, that whole education effort to get that started. But the big one is really that we'd like to evaluate what we've got for, for inspections around the township. And that information, we want to tie it to, um, what the health department is doing. And I've talked about this before, but the health department has their fetch GIS system. And we are in a position to uniquely, I think, to be able to tap into that um, soon and get the information that they have on file that they are going to be, they will be the ones to determine whether these septics that are out there today are are in good shape or they're in okay shape or they're in terrible shape and they need to do something about it. Um, the first piece of that, the, uh, I'll just pick a seat around. First piece of that. Is the, they have this purple dots that they call that they've assigned. Thank you. They, they've had file cabinets full of information over the years, and now they're taking that information to the file cabinets. They've scanned it and they have assigned every property that had some sort of information, be it a a well log maybe, or it's a septic inspection, or it's an installation, uh, contract or whatever. They have some information about it. Uh, no matter what that is, and they've simply assigned a purple dot to it. That purple dot then, um, I have taken, I have got a report from them that says, here's the purple dots we've got in Gares Township. And I've taken that information now and put it, melded it with the little bit of a database that I've got, the Excel database that I have. the little bit of a database that I've got, the Excel database that I have. And now I can go down and say, okay, these are all the properties, the IDs, property IDs that have a purple dot. And we have some information on, may not be the right information. It might not be current, but there's something there. And more importantly, this is the list of them that we don't have it on. So now we can take that as, we got to go a little further yet, be able to kind of vet that information to make sure it, we know what it is and that's, uh, that's indeed a, a septic or a, um, or maybe it's a, maybe it's a well log or whatever. And then from that information, we can then go and, uh, send letters out to the, to the, uh, to those homeowners and say, here's, here's the situation. You, you don't have, the, the health department does not have any information on your, your septic tank out there. And here are your options. One is to hopefully there we can voluntarily get people to, um, sign up to have inspections done of their septic systems. And we're not going to get all of them, but hopefully we're going to get some batch of them in, and update these numbers that we got to, you know, get some more inspections done. Yeah. How do we get to the last of them without an ordinance? I don't think we do. I think there's going to have to be some sort of ordinance that, that compels people to, you know, to take that last step and get the information into the health department's. That's the goal is to get the information into the health department's database. And then with that information that's there, I think we've got a better idea, a better chance of taking that information and then analyzing it to the point to say, well, how many, what's the right size for a septic tank with a three bedroom house? And we'll have that, both those pieces of information sorted and say, well, here's a house with, uh, four bedrooms and a 500 gallon tank. That's probably a problem or maybe is a problem depending on, on who you talk to. Those rules have got to be decided too. They've got to be worked out with the health department that says, you know, that, whether that scenario I just said is a problem or not, that's, that was a.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
All that's available right now. The health department already has all the rigs for what size tank you need based on bedrooms and stuff. I mean, don't reinvent the wheel. There, it's out there.
But we'll be able to take the data that we've got and say this, whatever that rig is, and match it up against the rig with the, once the.
Well, just remember this, when, when I was contracting, if, if we wanted to put on a bedroom addition, we had to evaluate the tank size and stuff, the existing. And say they were going to go to four bedrooms and they only had two, so they had a small tank. Smaller than what's required for four bedrooms. The health department, if the system was working, they were fine with it as long as if your system failed, you had the room to put in a system up to code. So in other words, you had the room for the larger tank and the larger field that goes with those bedrooms. If you did not have that area, then you didn't get, uh, you didn't get an approval and you couldn't do that. So there, it's, you know, it's all been, you're going to find stuff and say, well, that's small for that bedroom set. But yet it's working.
Well, I didn't, I didn't mean to say that I was trying to dictate what those numbers were at all.
No, no.
Somebody else can do that.
I'm just saying it, it's not black and white. It's, it's not.
Well, it's going to, yeah, true. The health department is probably going to be the last, would you agree, the last, the last say on it, whether they approve or whether they agree that this is, this is a health risk or not?
Depends what their policies are now. I mean, they might be handling it totally different from, you know, the last time I did one. So I, 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 you're right. I don't know that either.
Without the data, without collecting that data, we don't know what the situation is with. Well, there's numbers that are on here. For one thing, these are, this is, this is the G Wiz numbers I was talking about on that little, uh, chart at the bottom of that page.
Who's going to determine the evaluation criteria? Is that just going to be the health department, what they normally?
I think so. Okay. I, I mean, it's not me. It's not, we don't do that. I think it's going to be the health department.
Really, that information's already there.
Yep.
There's no.
The criteria.
Yeah. So that's, that's pretty much done. So.
But they don't know, there's a bunch of septics that are out.
Your whole thing right now is what is existing is what you're trying to determine. And where it's at, what's there, that type of thing.
What is existing and then take the next step.
Where the testing and all that stuff and what they're going to do when they do evaluate one, that's all established. If you're going to use the health department's own guidelines.
The health department is, uh, going to tell us that, yeah, this is the, this is the criteria going forward and, and they haven't changed their mind or there's, there, there's an opportunity for them to say, um, now's our chance to, to move the needle if they want to do that. They probably won't. I think they have the criteria. I, I don't dispute that at all, but I'm just saying we don't have the data to know what the pieces are in the township. And that's what we want to try to collect before we create an ordinance.
I just wanted.
You.
I'll say the other parts, whether you weren't reinventing everything. I mean, the health department has all the rules, all the regs that need to be followed and.
Agreed. I don't, I don't dispute that at all.
I'm, when I'm getting that, writing that part up in the ordinance, pretty, pretty easy.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Jim, also isn't, uh, Steve King just retired? So I understand that. Do you think that that'll have any impact on what they do differently going forward?
I don't know this Taylor, Taylor, somebody. I don't, I can't think of her last name, but, um, I've heard good stuff about it.
Good things.
Yeah, I think so. I'm encouraged that it's going to be a pretty smooth transition, but, you know, Steve been there a long time. So.
About, I, I'm a little bit unclear about the purple dots, but it sounds like how you described it is though, there may be some information. We're really not sure what it is.
Right.
So we might not, I mean, all the purple dots, um, may not really tell us things like sizes of tanks and location to the well and things like that. So.
A purple dot could mean that there was a complaint with no information. It could just mean there was a complaint 10 years ago and it created a file and that's what's in there. Okay. There's a file. There's a file here that got a purple dot, but what's in the file is what they're working on now. They're going, they're going to, they're, they're grabbing a file out of the file cap or off. It's been digitized now. It's on a computer and they're opening that up and they're saying, okay, this has got a, this is a good one. This has got a drain field and it's got a septic tank and here's the size and here's how it's related to the house. And they're putting all that information in there. And they're updating every one of those. They'll go to the next one possibly and they'll find, well, all there was is a, there's a well log here, but that's got nothing to do with the septic.
Right.
So until that, all that information is in there, there's not a lot we can really do to know for sure what, um.
It sounds to me like even after all that information is in there, it's going to be pretty sketchy.
Well, I, I hope that afterwards, the, okay, it shows up with just a well log. Well, now the, we'll run the report that says, you know, show me all the, uh, properties that don't have, a septic tank identified with them, a size of a septic tank. It's zero. Well, that, you know, that means that that property never really had the information it needed. So now it goes on a list to be, you know, do we send out and tell folks, we really need to have your, your system upgraded or your, your information upgraded to, uh, find out what you've got there.
For what it's worth, when I was reading through these master plan things, these people each talked about, uh, being able to help with GIS, uh, mapping. So I don't know if one of those guys get on board or how long it might take or where we are in the process. But maybe there are sorts of some other ideas about how to make that work.
I think the GIS part of it. It maybe, maybe, but the GIS part of it is, is, um, the, the file that's in the cabinet that's got information on it has got a property ID with it. So the GIS is located to within that piece of property. And now here's the information about it and that gets added to it. The, the fetch system doesn't go out and, uh, take a real, you know, defined coordinate, GIS coordinate and track this stuff down. That, I don't think that's what's going to happen. We don't, they don't have a database. They don't have a map for it for one. That was going to be part of what Glua did was, was that whole nice GIS map and that's set aside. So their map is tied to the information on the county's, um, database with the, with the mapping that they've got.
You know, I just, just to interject, I, I don't, you know, we're at this board level, we're thinking, okay, ordinance. Because that's what the planning commission's job is if it's, we're told to do that. But knowledge is power. Knowledge is what you need to, to, uh, make good decisions. And I think that this information that Jim's talking about isn't just tied to a potential ordinance, tied to the comprehensive view of the health of Higgins Lake and the ties into the science committee. It ties into all these other committees because if it turns out that there's a testing in the lake and there's a hotspot, that information might be very relevant to, why is this area, part of the lake got more nitrates or whatever it is in that water in relation to that information. I don't think it's just for the purpose of let's, let's push an ordinance. And I, I think it's wise that we take our time and, uh, and think about the approach. And I, 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 I think this board needs to consider the idea of the ordinance, but we shouldn't act on anything until the committee gets to the point where they're ready to roll something out that makes sense in relation to the whole push of the health of Higgins Lake.
Yeah, I think we just want a little bit more time to get started and get our arms around, you know, where we're headed with this before you go off and do a bunch of work that we come back and say, jeez, I wish you'd have done something a little bit different. Just gives us a little time to, to get past that is all. I don't, we don't, you know, I don't think we're going to get very far down the road and where we say, okay, we're ready to have the draft of, um, of an ordinance to, uh, you know, we'd like you to get started on.
Could you envision this almost coming in phases? Like we need, as you said, Jim, information, you know, we need, and I, maybe it's the first phase is inventory. Where we're at, that's what we're trying to do right now is where do we have problems and get those people to do it. And maybe we don't have to have a complete ordinance, but maybe at some point we have a phase one of an ordinance where, you know, you don't have any information on file, then you've got to get an inspection and, you know, I mean, I, that's the way I see this.
That would move things along quicker and you get your information faster. Then that would help tie in the other ordinance that you want to do. That's a pretty good idea.
Or if there was a way to, I don't think there is a way to outside of an ordinance or prior to an ordinance, like you just said, that, uh, we could have some enforcement with and be able to move and compel people to provide this information. And then once we have it, then the ordinance kicks in. So it may be outside of an ordinance, but I don't know how that would be structured without.
You might need to change the ordinance, like find out what, what we're missing, what we, what we have, what we don't have. And then you can produce an ordinance, rules and regulations to address those too. That's kind of one advantage of doing it in steps. You can, but I did read, uh, the Torch Lake Township, the Atrium County one. The Tom passed out a while ago and I think that's a really good start one ordinance that I think you guys should, in my opinion, should look at. And what he was talking, Tom was talking about was septic tanks, uh, with, I was going to read, uh, line four here of the Torch Lake Township one here, it says, uh, if septic tanks with design features that met the design standards at the time of construction will not be considered a failed system unless it, unless its performance is deemed failed.
There you go. Yeah.
So.
To your point.
That's kind of what he was saying, but that's what, uh, Atrium Township has, uh, in theirs.
That one's a point of sale. They have point of sale on that or?
Yeah, it's point of sale one. It is. That's correct.
The only thing that I didn't want you to do was to start with a point of sale, in my opinion.
I agree. We're not, that, that sample ordinance just happens to have that in there.
Yeah, exactly. But it has some good points in here.
But the ordinance itself is pretty, pretty solid.
I think, I think one of the challenges we're going to have, if you just look around Garrish Township and the densely populated areas is this is going to be connected with wells too, one way or another. We don't have the distance in a lot of places to have, you know, 50 feet from you or your neighbor's well to have your system. So I mean, that's, to me, that's going to be a big focus of ours.
They talk about that too, in this ordinance from Torch Lake. They talk about connecting it to well water. Yeah. I think it's a good point.
And it seems to me it is. And other people are going, you know, you're not going to tell me about my well. There's, that's my problem or it's my, it's none of your business and no septic ordinance. But I, I think it's got a, it's got a piece. It's, it's, it's important. I think.
It's a problem. And then all of a sudden it's everybody's problem.
Well, I'm a water guy and I did all the testing for the city for water. And you don't know if there's a problem until you start testing. Okay. People are not going to complain if they're drinking nitrate. They're not going to complain that, you know, they're drinking something that is not desirable. They're not going to know.
Yeah.
Unless they start getting sick and they have high concentrations, but you want to head something up before it gets bad.
Yep. I think as a, as a township, as a municipality, we have a, some sort of an obligation to, uh, to look into that while we're doing all this as a, as a matter of public safety and public health.
I mean, because once a well is drilled, it's not going to get retested maybe ever.
Yeah. Well, somebody, I don't know about the health department, if somebody should say, how often should your well be tested?
Exactly.
And, um, and we're not there. I'm, I have no idea what that number is, but we'll have to find that out and.
And I, I was licensed by the state for wells and for distribution systems. And yeah, there was, there is no set standard.
Yeah.
For, we had to test it because I, we were supplying water to the, the city. So I was testing twice a week.
Yeah.
You know, the water, but that's because we're feeding the public. But on a private system, there, I don't know of any.
There's no requirements I'm aware of.
Or time.
Other than, um, on a new system, it has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And we'll find, we'll, we'll have that record of what the health department's got in for, over the last, they've been doing that for however long they've been doing it since the nineties, I think. And those will be brought up and, you know, a well that was drilled 25 years ago, uh, could have been perfectly good then, but it might not be today. And so it'd be nice to get everything up on a reoccurring basis so we could find out what the condition of them are, I think, but. This, um, this box down here, it, it shows, um, just run through it. It goes all properties that are in this Excel database that I've got is, there's, uh, 5,000 properties listed on there, property addresses listed on there. Now residential or commercial improved properties in Garrish Townships is 3,430 and then Lyons got 1,928. Just kind of a comparison between the, sort of the size of Garrish versus Lyon, the number of people. And then I didn't have data from the health department on Lyon with regard to the purple dots. They're all done in Lyon. They've done all that work, but didn't send me the, the file. So. But in Garrish, of those 3,400, improved residential, residential and commercial improved properties, 2,600 of them have got purple dots. Be it a well log or a complaint or a perfectly good inspection or whatever. So that leaves about 800 that have no dots, that there's no information on. That would be the first ones we would like to try to chase is to try to figure out how we can get the word to those 800 people that we need to have, um, them work with the health department to get that done. The rest of them are just kind of, you know, so what? But I, but I was able to see on there with the information that I had of, of those 700, no purple dots, 200 of them, 210 are homesteaded properties. People live here all the time. Of those 210, 40 of them are on the lake. This is a question came up by somebody else. 14 are in a trust in that, that trust, this had to do with point of sale. If they're in a trust, there's the argument that they will never show up for a, a, a point of sale inspection. And then, um, well, 14, and 10 of them are in, in subdivisions and the rest are, the other four are meets and bounds. So it just kind of kept, you know, working its way down the list there as to, um, what that information was. But that's the kind of, right now, very rudimentary data analysis that we can do without, um, with the information that we've got or that we will have shortly. So. I guess to sum it up, I would say, you know, what your board feels most comfortable with, if, if you want, want to get started on something, that's fine, but we just want to have some room to, to, um, to get this a little further along with the work that we're doing on the septic committee. That's all. So.
Jim, do you expect to get the information from Lyon Township that you said they had, but you haven't gotten yet?
Yeah, that came from the health department. The health department sent it to me. So yeah, I, I don't know why he didn't, but I'm sure it's available and I'm sure that Mark will send it to me if I want to bring him back. So.
Okay, I got to expect the update. The question is on the numbers, the, I don't know, Jim, this morning at the, at the meeting, you said there was roughly 3,300.
That was residential only. Not, not commercial.
Okay. So the purple dots and no purple dots, if you added all those up.
Okay, so the purple dots and no purple dots, if you added all those up, would that be, it looks like it'd be more than 3,400?
Well, those are ones that have purple dots out of the 3,430 that he's talking about. That's how many of that, that's how many has got purple dots. I think that's what you said.
Right, but if you add, if you added up to 700 and the 200 and then that's not 3,430, does that?
2639 and 79286, pretty close.
Yeah, it's pretty close. Yeah, but it wasn't, it, it was more than that and that's why I was wondering if like the five.
This, this is the, I've had this information for a day and a half.
It's off by one.
I'll never, I'll never get it any closer than that.
Yeah, I, I just wondered if that numbers was supposed to, you know, add up there and then, or if it's to the 5,000. But you said the 5,000, that's commercial.
Yeah, those numbers kind of work one below the, it's, it, each refers to the one right immediately above.
Right.
And I will couch this with, um, I've got about 100 properties that I got from the health department on their lists that don't show up on the assessor's list.
So the health department thinks they're in Garrish Township, but we don't know that?
They're in Garrish Township, we don't, we don't know. I don't know what they are, but there, there's a discrepancy of about 100 out of that 5,000. Of those 5,082, there's about 100 addresses that, um, that, that show up on the, the, the health department says, here's a, here's a property ID, but the assessor says, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't have that.
Well, that could be from combining properties.
Sure.
Sales.
Exactly, that's exactly what some of it is, as I did.
Perhaps, I, I nailed out 4,000 and some odd bills this weekend. I can't tell you how many we got back that, because people move and, or they just change the numbering system.
So that information needs to be vetted on my list for sure and to the bottom. Thanks for the report.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for having me.
So Jim, if we just send you our tax bill back then, what happens to it?
Yeah, I, I got mine.
You piqued my interest there.
You know, every story you can come up with, I think I've heard them in the last six months. Thanks, Jim.
You know, as, as far as our own discussion goes, I, I don't think that we're too far from what we would want to use if we look at what they have here for Torch Lake. So I would kind of like put it in abeyance or, you know, if we want to talk about some small changes in it, we can get that, I mean, sooner or later, something's going to happen. So we're going to want something to happen, I mean, it's a better way to say it.
I'll echo your thoughts, I was thinking the same thing, even if it's just somewhat generic. I mean, there's certain things it's going to have in it, no matter what form it ends up taking. There's, there's a certain body that, that's going to have to be in there. I just didn't get going on it and have it put in our pocket.
And then, I mean, we're going to get changes at the end of it anyway. So we can incorporate whatever changes that, uh, the health of Higgins Lake might come up with. And at least we'll be further along at that point. The other thing I would mention is that it appeared to me as though the Elk Rapids might have been the first and that the Torch Lake might have been the second version. Cause there are some additional things that I found in the Torch Lake that looked to me like they were added. And so maybe that's a little bit more advanced, um, copy to work with.
Could be, I, I.
A lot of it's simply the same, but some.
Yeah, they can change, I mean, they do addendums to this stuff all the time.
Yeah.
So it's hard to sometimes keep track of it all, although there's supposed to be a record or whatever.
It's like a lawyer wrote this. It's like a lawyer wrote it.
There's probably a few in the area.
I think it was AI written.
Oh, yeah.
If, if we did, it did something like the face thing, as you were mentioning, Brad. And I, I think that's something we could work on right now. You know, just in that, and it's with the phasing, you could, you could say, here's the overall plan. We'll, we'll develop a skeleton ordinance that will be added to later, that'll be the final one. Or you could say, here's a, you know, phase one ordinance XY, you know, ordinance number one for septic stuff, and it is only to do the identification without doing anything about making people. And I, I don't know how that works with the township board as far as like setting laws. Cause this one, you could make something, you wouldn't, you'd have maybe a three page or maybe even just a one page thing saying, here's a new ordinance that's going to affect for Garrish. This is, you know, by this time, everybody should have their septic tanks identified and listed with the health department. And here's enforcement and, and a thing, and that could be, you could do something like that. I'm not necessarily saying for that, but you could do something like that, you know, maybe in a couple month period. And then you could come up with another ordinance at another time saying, okay, here's, you know, or phase two of that, which is, this is a standalone ordinance to take it to the next step to have.
You know, it sounds like if we could collect all the information that's not going to be in the purple dots when they're done, that would be a terrific advantage to what we're trying to do.
My understanding is all the scanned documents are getting put into the Fetch GIS now, and that could be completed by fall, I'm hearing September or something. So that might be a time to start to revisit, see actually what, at least what we have there. And I was envisioning, and I don't, and this is just, my thoughts is, um, you know, and, um, an inspection or, and I'm looking at it as an inspection, you could start with ones where there are no records, ones that are more than 25 years old, you know, if you do it, ones that are the greatest risk to get done and to kind of in phases, get everybody inspected to find out where we're at.
Yeah, the, the, the one consideration, again, I, I mentioned in the last meeting too, is, I mean, it's, you can say it's kind of trivial, a few hundred dollars, but you know, people do their cleaning and stuff at different times and different cycles, some never do it, you know, some do it. And if you came out with something like that, you know, if people, if you had some kind of a timeframe saying, we're planning to do something with the heads up and people are going to schedule it. They, you know, there could be people, I just got my clean out today. And then you, you know, two weeks later, they say, you got to have this done. And they said, well, you got to have another, it's got to be cleaned out again before they can open the tank up for the inspector. Regardless if it's just, you know, the toilet's been flushed once. And so there's some heads up, I mean, that's.
Yeah, you'd want to give it a bad notice for sure.
Yeah, it's.
I, I agree with that.
And I mean, to, to me, I get concerned about some of these things, even personally with my places and, and stuff is, all of a sudden, you, you, are you talking like in, you know, next week or I mean, next month? And they're going to have something, you know, so by September, you're going to have to have your stuff cleaned out, inspected? And oh my gosh, you're going to be put on an audit list and, you know, and be ready to go? And that's kind of what Lyon did, um, you know, a year ago. And they started going forward with the stuff and that's what gets people anxious. You know, all of a sudden, when, when nothing's in, and, and there's a lot that can, I mean, again, this is something that, you know, some of the stuff I was looking at doing, I think a lot of people were, they were looking at doing upgrades to their places or if they had a system that was kind of bad, they were trying to wait till the sewer system, you see how that kind of panned out? And so then COVID and the sewer system and that kind of pushed things out a few more years. And now they're kind of, things are trying to get back to that. And then if there's going to be a sewer renewal, you know, effort and, you know, in a couple of years, people will say, well, why do this and have that? And, and then again, if you're waiting for that, it may never even happen at that point. Um, okay, keep it on the agenda then. And.
Is there anything else we should do with it, like by the next meeting? What do you think?
I don't know.
Or if you think about it, you know, within the next week or so, send us a whole note or something like that. We can be prepared for, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, it's kind of putting you on the spot saying, what else should we try to do right now? That might take a little thought too.
Well, like August, we don't have a regular scheduled meeting. So the next, the next regular scheduled meeting, unless something special came up, would be September. And at that point, I, I don't see a problem with just, you know, keep it on the agenda every time and just kind of have a status update. In September, they may have a significant portion of this stuff that we then say, okay, we're going to start drafting our thing on the side, whether doing this, then we'll come together or we'll do a phase thing.
And his septic committee will have done a lot more work by then and he'll have an updated report.
I'm on that committee. And you know, the, uh, this whole help Higgins Lake is just now starting to get some traction, starting to dig in and move forward. Every committee's starting to chug along, they're getting a feel for what they've got. But you know, the septic thing is, I think alike right now, a lot of it's got to do with just gathering the information. They're really, the last time we met, we talked a lot about just educating the public about their systems. Cause a lot of people don't think about it, it's underground, they don't, never thought, never thought until something percolates, you know? So, um, I, probably by September, there'll be a little bit more feel for, there's some people who'd like to have an ordinance tomorrow. And, and, but it just, it's not practical. And we have to overcome, we as health Higgins Lake, the negative effects of what happened with, uh, blew it up. You know, there's a lot of distrust out there that's got to be overcome. You know, right now, it's, it's like I'm from the government and I'm here to help. Well, it doesn't work, so.
What we might do is, um, you've all got copies of the sample ordinances. If you don't, or if you go hunting and you find one that you think is, you know, more relative and stuff. But you could just go through those ordinances and basically highlight what you think is relevant, important, what you'd like to see in the ordinance in some shape or form, doesn't have to be exactly. And, uh, and then we get together and look at a list and, or you could send it to me and I'll compile it into a, a master list of, uh, stuff that, uh, we'd like to see in it. I mean, you could take a, a sample ordinance and just use their headers, you know, they get purpose, right? Section one timeline, one time baseline inspections. So you could keep it under those categories. There's not everything in here you might not agree with. It's just a little bit of homework to get it started. On the, uh, when we did the, um, short-term rental one, I just took Marky's ordinance and ripped it apart and stuck our name in the front of it and, and then did a bunch of other little editing and so forth to try and make it our own. And, and then from there, we took it and molded it and shaped it to do that again. But I think, uh, like you said, there's, give the Higgins Lake Committee a chance to get ahead of the curve a little bit. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, Anthony, come on up. Get a little background, Anthony owns, um, I can't remember the name of your business, the computer shop.
Classic computer repair.
Oh, yes. Over there by the, um, OTV motel.
It's called Studio Five with Markenfelder, if you remember that.
Yeah, it was a hair place. And if I, you tell me if my information's right, you, you own five acres there?
Uh, it's just under seven.
Just under seven.
Yeah, I think it's like 6.93 on the.
So you own all the way over to, um, Steel Road?
Correct. And then back up to Stauffer's property there where it opens up.
So you're the heaviest awarded area there, there's a, if you want to pass that around, that's a picture of his site. So he wants to know, he's owned commercial C2. C2, you're looking to do a motel?
Not necessarily a motel, um, I'm thinking more along the lines of lodging, um, some small cabins, um, kind of, I don't want to say resort, but kind of like a resort type feel. Uh, one thing I don't want to do is tear down all the trees and stack these things on top of each other. Uh, I want to keep a rustic feel to it. And, and like I said, you know, just have something that can accommodate some form of lodging, whether it be large groups that are attending, you know, let's say like the barn for a wedding, gives them a, a communal place to gather, um, different events and potentially have a, oh, I don't want to call it a conference center, but like a main lodge, you know, that could facilitate a, a meeting or a conference or something like that. And, and my, my main reason for, for coming today, I don't want to spend a bunch of hours mapping things out, doing all my due diligence, planning all this and then showing up and you guys are like, yeah, sorry. Like, no, we can't do it. So that's mainly why I'm here is to just kind of throw some of these ideas out here. I've read through some of the ordinance in that, in that area and there's nothing specific around lodging or resort. Um, under residential, they've got retreat centers, uh, and then under commercial, you have a health club. And then of course, I believe it was under table 33, there was other uses not listed that would require, uh, a special permit. But I didn't know if this would fall under like hotel motel, you know, what the guidelines would be for something like this.
How many units are there?
You know, I haven't spaced it out to see exactly what I think would fit there comfortably. Uh, again, I'm, my goal isn't to turn this into, you know, a subdivision, right? Um, I want to keep that up north feel, I want to keep that rustic feel about it. I would say probably like six to eight comfortably.
And you expect them to be rentals, right?
Yes, no. Uh, primarily on a longer term, uh, not long-term in the sense of month by month, but not like a, an overnight, you know, somebody coming through and, oh, you know, we need a place to stay. You know, more for a holiday weekend, a long weekend, a week at a time, something along those lines.
Yeah, Holton Lake does that now, um, with lake, you know, somebody has a big piece of lakefront and then they have cabins, they rent out, you know, to people who want to come and stay in their cabins for however how long. I mean, it's kind of, kind of what you're, and they, they do have some, some of them have a, a little center or two where they can get together.
Yes.
I don't think many do, but some do. Um, and would you do this in phases? Like would you do a few at a time and maybe a few more or would you expand down the road?
So my, my plan moving forward, if this, if this is a feasible, um, thing to do, uh, my next steps would be to map out, I've got the, the land surveyed already. But then it would be to get some measurements, uh, see what the requirements would be on said cabins. And, and then look at, okay, how can I space these out? I have a little bit of a wetlands area that I'd be steering clear of. Um, and so from that point, it would be calculating some numbers. What am I looking at cost-wise to per cabin? Uh, what would I be looking at for a lodge? And then deciding, is this something I want to bite off in one, one chunk and just say, let's go? Um, or is it something that I would do in phases? So I, to answer your question, I'm, I'm kind of.
I'm just throwing it out to you.
Yeah, yeah. And, and if it gets done in phases where let's say we put in, you know, two or three cabins to start with a, a grand plan of 10 or eight, I would set it up to where any of the preliminary as far as electric, septic, well, all of those would be put in with the intention of the final plan.
I say, where were you two, two years ago when the storage units there? That, that was my concept that, you know, if they had the money that, to do something like that, I'm, I'm really, you know, I'd encourage that, what you're doing. The, the way we have it in the plan, we have, when we do reviews for these kinds of things, and I don't know if you've been explained this before, we have, there's three types of the reviews. Um, one is a sketch plan review, doesn't cost any money application. You come in, kind of what you're doing kind of right now, but you could do that where you, a, a little bit more information. And we kind of say, yeah, here's, here's your thoughts and stuff on there. And, and here's more of a plan there without doing a formal review within the next phase. And we have a checklist for that, that marries up, we can give you a copy of that. That does a preliminary site plan review and something like this would probably be a special use permit, application, I think. And that would require a public hearing most likely, um, in addition to the, as part of a preliminary site plan review. And then you have the final site plan review. And, and in that case, it actually made the final authority that approves it, would approve it, would likely be the, uh, Garrish Township Board. So we'd make recommendations to them.
Fine stuff, just a question though. We said special use just now, right?
Right.
And I'm ignorant on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure myself.
I think one of the reasons that Anthony was sent here tonight, because it was just so happy we were meeting. It was partially because Jason, when you talk to him, they're building inspector today. And again, this is my lack of, not been around as long as you guys have, but under, I think C2, if, if that was deemed a campground, I don't think it fits within the ordinance. I think according to what Jason was thinking.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, and part of, not to interrupt you, but to, to throw this out there, when I spoke to Jason, I kind of threw that out there, we're having some cabins, maybe a couple campsites. You know, and then I started thinking about it, it's like, well, there's a campground next door they're not doing anything with. I'll do the lodging thing and if that ever comes up for. I'll do the lodging thing, and if that ever comes up for sale, I'll buy that, do a campground there. It's already established, it's already been zoned to do that. Um, I'm sure there's a lot more that goes into it, but that was just kinda my thought.
That's why Jason, I think, recommends you come, so you get a feel for this, but I think, uh, what you're describing tonight isn't what I envisioned from what Jason said to me this afternoon, as far as, is he, he was concerned that you wanted to do a campground?
No.
And I, and I don't know if putting a cabin without facilities makes it a campground, or if you're talking about putting a cabin up that's got functioning toilets and water and everything inside each one of them. So it's like a mini house or something. And I don't know if that makes any difference.
Yeah, I, I have to look there and, and look that stuff up too, what it, but to me, this is kinda like Camp Westminster in a way in Lyon Township, or that may be in Crawford. Um, but it's like the Macmillan Center, I think, you know, maybe not as elaborate, but you got places of lodging, people come in and stay like a hotel thing in a cent, you know, a central place, you know, stuff. And that's, uh, I think a non-for-profit type of thing. So if you're doing environmental stuff, you can get discounts and, or if you're doing non-for-profit profit conferences, you can hold them there. So to me, it's kind of how I, I would look to that as an example, is that something, you know, how do they, how do we classify that? That's actually not in our township. Um, and is, is a reference.
I, I agree with you, Mike. That sounds like the closest thing, if you're familiar with the Ram Center. Yeah, that's, is that part of what you're thinking, something like that?
I'm not familiar with it enough to s- to say whether that's
They have, they have some lodging, they have a center, they have a couple of occupational spaces, a main cabin, it sounds like what you're
But, but, but your, your concept is the thing that I was thinking, you know, for, I, I didn't like to see all those properties that we reclassified that have now turned into, uh, uh, storage rental units.
Yeah.
You know, at a key area. And I said, it was a nice, you know, wooded area back there, you put cabins like that. You could get people coming up staying for a week at a time with, you know, numbers of families for weddings or your reunions or whatever, and then they go to the lake and you could even have, if you do it nice, so you don't cut down all the trees, you, you make it uh, there. So it is something like, like the Ram Center and something, but you know, not necessarily, you know, for business stuff, but it could be used for that, but it's, you know, it's like a level two camping stuff instead of being out in the tents at the state parks and instead of being hotels. Looking at our zoning districts, C two is what you're zoned at, and it really doesn't fit the uses you're presenting.
Permanent housing.
Possibilities. Looking at the district, I think the closest one would be RMF, which is Residential Multiple Family Residential District.
Um, Under what use?
The principal purpose of the RMF Multiple Family Residential District is to provide opportunities for apartment and similar multiple family developments to meet varied housing needs of current and future residents.
See, but this wouldn't be, these aren't housing needs.
No, it's, it's a glor- Housing, whether you're renting it or owning it, it's housing.
Yeah, but that's, that
Yeah, I mean, what are you saying?
I mean, this, it's, it, it's not like, uh, it's not like a, like duplex setting where it'd be a long-term rental with annual contracts or
I'm saying you could have individual units.
It fits the same definition of housing though. People would stay in it.
Sure.
Oversimplifying it.
People stay in a hotel though, so that's, I guess where I'm, I'm not understanding.
I'm saying you could build individual units. You could build tiny homes. Is that what you're thinking? Something along those kinda lines?
Yeah.
Simple utility stuff, they come, they rent it, they leave it.
Yeah.
And you could get a rezone possibly.
Well, yeah, you can get, and that's, I'm trying to see if you fit anywhere in here, and that's the closest that I come to now. You could do a PUD, which is a planned unit development, where you say, I'm gonna build here, here, and maybe set aside this as an eco park or, you know, undeveloped, I'm saving these trees. That would be the other thing you might wanna look at.
Okay.
As a way to fit in the zoning. We can, I can talk to Jason more about it and, and see, but, um, Yeah, the, the rezoning thing has been done before, but again, that goes through the township board. And if they rezone the area, when they look to change it from C two to whatever zoning classification that would fit that thing, you have to then look at that, that list that could, could everything in that list, you know, uh, match up and be used just in case you didn't do it for, um, for the other things that are already listed.
So what we're telling you here, I think that anything, I mean, it's possible.
It's possible.
Just have to, might have to do a little more homework to, you know.
A little more focus.
It was definitely wise of you to start here. I'm here early.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this, it's just preliminary work I'll have hours into, you know, and, um, I don't know if you guys were on the board when the person who was trying to do the repair shop there before I bought that building, but this is exactly what he didn't do. And that's kinda how I ended up with the place. So I mean, it worked out great, but, um, yeah, this was kinda that first step is I don't wanna waste a bunch of time mapping all this out, getting pricing and, and spending all this time and then not be able to fit it in somehow. Um, so I guess moving forward, if, if it is a possibility, um, I mean, I can do a sketch plan with, you know, the information that I have with, um, just kinda like an overall, you know, big plan, this is what I'd like to see long-term, and then, you know, based on pricing and things like that, what it might look like from a phased process.
Sure. That's acceptable.
Okay. If he did that, I'm just clarifying this partly for myself, but also also for Anthony. What I'm hearing here is that if he wanted to put a motel in that property, that fits the C two, is that right?
Yeah.
It does not?
I don't think so. What, do you?
Well, I mean, what is the TP next door?
Hotels, hotels, including conference services, a special use permit would be what you would need for that in a C two zone.
So it could stay C two and it would need
Special.
With a variant of some sort.
Yes.
Okay. If, if he puts in cabins or commercial rental use, that's somehow different than a motel because it's multiple buildings. Is that why we're
I don't know.
I think it's more of the same, but I think it's just, it's not crystal clear. It's a special use that you'd have to apply for. Like putting those residences of that type into a C two.
Oh, okay. Cause what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is if he did a sketch plan, he comes in here, are you gonna tell him, or I should say we, but are, uh, does he need to go? At that point, would we be then saying, all right, now this is gonna work under C two, you're, you're gonna have to get it rezoned, or you're gonna have to get a special use? Is that?
That's correct. I mean, it's no different than the communication tower that Jim ended up leasing his property for. We got it rezoned to accommodate that tower.
I just, I wanna know what
Right.
I don't wanna lead him down.
And, and, and for the storage unit, the properties that we're talking about, we're right behind the marathon station that off of Federal Highway where
Oh, yeah.
They go, that there is, it was divided up in three lots and there's three different storage unit complexes going two are in, one more in between is to go in there. And those lots were designated as C one, but you, but you couldn't put it, the ordinance, you could not put story, many storage units in a C one lot. So we did a, we did a rezoning or that allowed as a special use case, without changing the C one, we allowed um, storage units to be put in a C one lot if they fit a certain criteria, basically if they're larger than one acre um, and some other, in a certain areas. So we didn't change the zoning from a C one, but we changed the category. So some, and that's the point where if there was something here that didn't match, one of the options could be you could take your C two and change that, or you could take it and request like a change with C one. If that was category was in there for that type of thing, and that's the biggest thing now is to figure out what kinda category that would go in as it exists right now. And then what's, what are the options that you would then pursue? There's flexibility is
Sure.
What we're saying.
It's just a matter of
Or does it
Something you need to consider is how you're gonna handle your septic, cause there's no sewers out there.
Oh, yeah.
So there, when you do multiple dwellings, you go over a certain number and now you get DEQ ego involved. In, um, through the health department still, but, but you, you get into a whole different category potentially. Um, so you, you might wanna look into that too, and just so you know what the
Yeah, it's good to know.
What the numbers are and the cutoffs and all that sort of thing. Um, Yeah, I mean, it's something we can do too, but I'd, I'd recommend looking at, you know, contacting the Ram Macmillan Center and see how they did that. There is also a place I attended a function before, um, further north of the Gold Coast and the west side of Higgins Lake. And, uh, before you get to the church and stuff up there, there's a group at, um, there's actually about several places that are rented out like, like that. It's like cabins and then there's a main owner there. And I know there's been some functions, you know, like
There's a few up in that area.
Like from Higgins Lake Foundation or something like that, that had a, a thing there and there's off of the shore, they're kinda set back.
I think I
But there's, I think it's like four or five cabins.
He's on Birch Lodge?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
That's right down the road from Silver Dollar?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so Birch Lodge is a thing and that, that kind, that would be, to me, that's kinda what you're looking at.
Yeah.
And how they do that and how Lyon Township handles that is, is that would be a way of
Okay.
Of, of something similar, cause I, that's why, I don't know if they rent them out for like a month, but my guess is it's probably the same thing. Where you could, you know, people could rent out a couple of them, you know, with families and they just stay there and and it's done. And I think there's a place on the east, on, on this side here that somebody does that as well, I think, further north of here. That, um, and I don't know if there's a name for that, or if that's, if he has just like three or four places or
For, for what it's worth, I think there's a need there. I think it's a interesting concept you need to have.
Appreciate that. I can agree.
Yeah, if I had the money, I would have done that myself. To the storage things, because that was the point of of the units, the, of the C one stuff is focused primarily on, you know, the Garrish Township and the surrounding people right around there.
Yeah, we're willing to work with people on doing stuff like this, but you, you're gonna have to do a little more work maybe, you know, on your end. So just
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any problem doing the legwork and doing my due diligence, but, uh, you know, the main, some of the stuff's just not written very clearly. And so, uh, you know, there's probably gonna be a lot of questions along the way. I know you guys probably didn't write all this stuff and I'm sure in some of it, you probably can agree where it's like, man, you know, it's not, uh, not really super clear the way this is written. Uh, but yeah, I've got no problem doing, doing the legwork and doing some due diligence to make sure, you know, it falls where it needs to and, um, I'll report back at some point with some more questions and, uh, probably a, a sketch plan. If, uh, if I can get this work done before, I think, is it September is the next?
Yep. That's next schedule line, yep.
Um, I'd imagine I'll probably have some stuff laid out by then and have a little bit more information. And so I may, uh, contact you about getting on that agenda.
Um, work with Jason.
Yeah.
He knows this stuff. This is his forte, so start there. And, uh, you know, as you put something together.
I did.
Well, he wasn't, he wasn't totally clear, um, you know, and, and we're not either, to be honest with you, it's
Yeah, yes, you're scared.
There's, there's there's various paths that could end up going down.
Sure.
Um, but the point is there's flexibility, there's options. It's not a no.
Okay.
My office is across the hall too.
Right on.
So don't go there.
Yeah. So basically you're telling me go across the hall is what I need to be.
No, if you don't, if you're having trouble getting what you need, you know, I, I don't know it all, but I could point you somewhere.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, appreciate the, your time and, uh, appreciate you getting me on the agenda to ask some questions and hopefully lay down some groundwork here in the next couple of months to report back to you with a, a sketch.
Yeah, typically try to get something to us in advance, at least a week.
Yeah, a week or two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Helps.
No problem.
To look at.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it, guys.
Great idea.
Um, would you think that the most clear path for what it seems like what he wants would be a special use in the C two? Special use? Or is it still too?
Still too foggy for me to comment that way, but good.
But if you did not reading through the specifics or not, what do you think it would fit with the C one?
No.
I don't think there's any good fit right now anywhere. That's the problem, I think.
My book, C one, so for a commercial outdoor creation facilities, uh, C two is a special, uh, land use permit. And, and motels are the same thing for, for C one, not even an option.
Yeah, I think we'd have a lot further reach to get to a C one than a C two.
But, but that's the case and, yeah, like I, I guess this, the motels and conference centers that if we did like the storage units where you, you take something, then, then you allow that with some special criteria, and then, then that's gotta be used as a special use approval. Yeah, that could be one effort. The, um, and I know for, I mean, for the storage units, you know, we, you couldn't specifically do it for, you know, one type of, a thing or somebody, so you had to put criteria that wouldn't quote spot zoning or something like that. So we had kind of a general location with, you know, a size requirement.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know how you'd fit that in. To me, it'd be kinda like a conference center, you know, and kind of a motel or a slash camping thing, but you know, maybe that's a caveat that could be put in there that you know, if it's a motel or classified this as a camping thing, you know, with the hard, you know, walled structure or something like that, that could be, you know, maybe the criteria. So that is, I'm just throwing stuff out right now, just as Okay, we'll research it and see. Public comment? Can you come up?
Sure.
In your name, please, for the Yes.
It should be Ann.
Greg Denzner, three sixty, Cheney Point. Um, I'm on the planning commission in Woodhall Township, Chiawassee County.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. I was just curious, a couple of questions with regards to your master plan, what those quotes were. You guys didn't mention those price-wise, but you guys are
Yeah, the one was twenty-fourth?
Twenty-three for McKenna and twenty-four.
I think it was twenty-three and a half. Twenty-three fifty. And twenty-four and a half. Or twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not soliciting for anybody. We used Ro I think out of Lynn. And they were significantly lower. Really? I was, I was just trying to get through to my, my, uh, email and I, I don't have internet service here, but I'm, I'm thinking significantly low.
Ro, you said R O?
We use them, uh, the village.
Okay.
And then the next thing was, is how old is your master plan? Cause you said it was pretty old.
It was, it's due for a five-year review update. It's like a year overdue.
Oh, so it's only six years?
No, since, since we approved the last review to see if it needed an update and we said, no, it didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, it's dated.
So what township did you say or plan?
Woodall Township?
Woodall.
Yeah. Part of very, very southwest corner of Chiawassee County.
Let's see population, you know.
Of Woodhall is thirty-three hundred, somewhere in there.
It's not big.
I, I used to audit Chiawassee County many, many years ago.
Okay, it's, it's not real huge.
Is it a city or a village or a town?
It's just a village.
Village, okay.
Township, it's a township.
How'd you spell the? Woodlow?
Woodhall.
Woodhall, okay.
One word? Uh, yeah.
You said dent? I mean, Greg.
Denzer, D A E N Z E R. And I can get you guys the, our board president's number if you want.
Do you remember what they, they charged?
I wanna say sixteen grand, fifteen, sixteen grand, somewhere in there. Process was about nine months long. Mailings, send it out with tax information.
Yeah.
Um, we're probably still four months from being done, but, um, you know.
It's typically a twelve-month process.
Yeah, it, it really is. A lot of, a lot of meetings behind the scenes that you guys, that the, the general public doesn't know about and that you guys should be congratulated for, but um, it's nice to know. And, and we've, we've been able to utilize it and stay out of some lawsuits because of our master plan too. Now, we're just totally advisory to, to Chiawassee County. They've been seems working on their master plan for much longer than we have, but like years. But, yeah. But, you know, it at least gives the county something of what we want to do with regards to that and. Yeah. And it can't avoid lawsuits. It's huge that way. So. That and then I was just going to comment on the, on the septic ordinance. I mean, I know he wasn't real popular with the. Point of sale, especially because you guys have a lot of trust and stuff like that. But if you can do a hybrid, I mean, Chiawassee County, if you do. Point of sale and it seems to to be beneficial, but I know you guys have some homes that have been.
We've got a lot of homes here that are literally in families for.
And likely won't be.
So a nice hybrid might not be a bad idea either. Point of sale or five years or something like. I mean, I ride snowmobile and you can tell when somebody is a full timer and all of a sudden you hit that. Mush spot, someone's got a septic that's failing.
Yeah.
So, but, but thanks for your time.
Thank you.
For your work, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't forget to come back to the September meeting.
Any comment?
No.
Okay. Jim?
Well, two of you were, are bored being, well, three, three, you were there too. So. The short term rental ordinance that was drafted by the planning commission, I took it. The, each board member had the opportunity to make comments on. On concerns, whatever. I also reviewed it more depth with. Jason and. And then went through about eight, ten different. Other ordinances plus. Met with Kirsty Russo, who actually is the one that is enforcing, the one from Markey. One of the main questions I asked her was. If you could change anything, what would you do? And so two of the changes that. I asked to put in there today were from her, basically. Also, Muz. Caught a couple of good things on their, I'm sorry, their police chief, Wazinski. And. So with all that input and plus I've been, now that I've been out and I'm getting emails from people like over all the weekend. Help because of. Their neighbors going, having a good time. So anyways, today we took. With, I went through all the proposed revisions. We. Went through it one by one. I made the changes proposed from that. Into our document and sent it off to Brian, Brianold, then be sent it to Scott House for review. I expect. In about thirty days, we'll have something back. With recommendations. I stayed away completely from the civil penalty part of that. Then let Scott deal with with that. So the changes that were in there. Basically, one of the, the main ones would be like thousand foot on any other unit. So that there's no, you can't have them adjusted. That was one of the additions that we, we put in there. The other had to do with having the health department. Certifying their, that their septic is adequate for that size of the house. The rest of it was probably more just housekeeping than anything like. Garbage receptacles. We didn't really talk about that, but you know, that was, I found that in some other ordinances that I thought, you know, that'd be good to add in there. To make sure that the garbage is properly stored and that left out front of the property.
And it's an issue that I've seen how it's issued.
Yeah, well, I, on these things like drive, he goes, it just gets piled up. Little housekeeping things, but one of the things the police chief thought was, we put four inches on the lettering. At our ordinance, but the ordinance for the township is for five inch, he saw.
Oh, yeah.
I give credit, he came in and saw me, it was like three or four things he thought needed to be changed. So, and I also went back and met with Tom and had him look through. What I was about to give to the board so that we did, I, I didn't. I didn't really want to like sidetrack the planning commission. We did, and you guys did most of it because I came on afterwards. And that, that could have been easily passed as it was. But, you know, obviously it was going to go to the, our board and when Tom met with our board. I was a little dissatisfied, I think Tom was too, in that I don't think they had done their homework. And so it was everybody looking at each other, not saying anything. So I said, I'll, I'll spearhead it and. Everybody has to write me a list of their comments and that's how we compiled what we've got. So, I guess the other big thing that was probably in there. Is that if you have a principal residence, living, you're, you're onsite. And you're renting out fifty percent or less of your property, you're exempt. You don't even have to be part of this ordinance. It's, it's not going to compass a lot of people, but the people that rent are their house out or maybe rent. You know, maybe have a second. Piece on their property from, that was prior to the current zoning. That they've been doing it all along, little old lady. They're out and, and but that's the people that are on VRBO and Airbnb and really going at it as a commercial enterprise. They're in, so.
Can I ask what the? Markey person said, what were the two changes she, yeah, she was, would suggest?
One was. Getting, one of the things that's in our, in our ordinance. Was that you had to notify, the property owner had to notify all their surrounding properties, give them a copy of the ordinance and. And. So that they knew who to call in case they had a noise problem. And. The. She said, I wish I would have made them have proof of that because what was happening, she's getting phone calls. From somebody and they're saying, well, my neighbor's got a VRBO over there and they're going, and I don't know. I'm filing a complaint. She said, why do you call them? And, and I don't know their number, I don't know who they are. They were never given that information. So we changed the wording to, to tell them that they had to. Show proof of delivery of the ordinance and their phone number and everything to their surrounding properties. The other one. Oh, shoot, we had to do with. It was minor, but. It had to do with the administration of it. It escapes me right at the moment, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything big, but it was just. A, a matter of. Oh, changing the wording when you do your application. It says in there as it's worded, the way we did, it just says your application would get rejected. If it's incomplete. Or if it's. If you didn't have everything in there and she said you should put in there if it's not filled out, if it complete, because that isn't in there. So if you're. She was just saying some, some people. Leaving blanks and then she's have to search it out. She's basically saying, if it's not filled out. Crop, yeah. Kick it back, you know, you're back at the bottom of the list. So those, I think, were the two main ones that she. But it was very informative talking to her, but the big difference between. Markey and us is they live, they limited theirs, I think, to, I think to fifty. Or policy, that's all they allowed. It's either forty or fifty, but I think it's fifty. And, you know, we've already identified, I had married it, my deputy has already identified a good solid one hundred of them right now in Garrish. And we suspect that there's probably thirty to fifty more that we don't have on our radar. She went through Airbnb. VRBO and whatever other platforms we could find. And if you go on there, they don't tell you exact address. So then we had to do a little. Detective work to narrow it into who's who and. So, you know, one of the things that the township is going to have to tackle as a policy, once the source goes forward. It's going to be how many? And. I don't know what that number is going to be.
So, and you said you added a thousand foot requirement. That means you can't be two within a thousand feet of each other?
That's what we. So that's a two thousand foot radius and a fifty feet, you know, average in some places, that's forty places. Your neighborhood alone.
There's a lot of conflicts, I know about.
That, that's going to start it right away. Well, there's going to be a lot, man. Yeah. Well, that's. Especially on the, on the lakefront, I mean.
Thousand feet's a long way.
Yeah, and most properties are fifty feet or you could get a hundred, that's forty places down there. And I would say now, I bet in some areas like over on the west side, they're open comfort, there's, you got like four or five in a row. And then you got a couple back and if you just have a radius, you would get one in that whole area and you would wipe out.
That's going to cut down your. Trust me, I think it's a good, I like the.
That, that's just, yeah, that's something I can see is a really big point of contention.
You know, Jack.
Well, I'll just tell them that you guys told me to say. I, you know.
Saying like that is.
This is going to.
Need something.
Yeah, well, this is going to, this is going to go to the attorney and then it's going to come back. Our board's got to. Say, all right, we're ready to go to public hearings. When we do that, we're going to get that feedback. On today, there was an overwhelming number of people, you were there, that would like to see them either limited or just not. Happen. We had one person that was pro. You know. Though that was against having the ordinance and that was somebody that owns, you know, multiple units on a single piece of property. That's nonconforming. I've only had one other person that sent an email, but they, that was against it, but they. Well, they don't, they don't live in the same neighborhoods that we do, so they. Wouldn't experience this sort of discomfort of having one of those next to them. So, yeah, I, I don't, it's, this isn't done and over and I, I suspect we're gonna. There might be some variances that have to be dealt with. I, I, I don't know how that is going to pan out, but I. I know. We got to move forward.
You do. What do you envision? We're going to the attorney, right?
Yeah.
Comes back. Then you guys are going to make the revisions or is it coming back to us at all?
I, I don't know. Would you like it to come back to you?
I don't think, I don't think we need it. Why would we want it? We gave them everything we thought of, they'd added some stuff to it.
I don't agree with everything they've added, frankly, okay. There's, I see issues there. This thousand feet thing, it's pretty huge. There's a. There's the P R E thing. I don't know how you're going to verify that, that owners are only utilizing the property fifty percent. Are you going to track that, verify it?
Well, for one, they gotta be there so that you know they're not.
They have to be their residents.
It's their residents. That's why I had to.
Well, you say fifty percent or less of their home.
Of the property. What it is, is like if you're renting. That part of your.
You rent a bedroom.
Whatever, you're not going to be included in this. Jenny Walker was one of the people that came and spoke when we started in this. She came to one of our meetings, bare fact, and she. Lives in her property, it was her parents' home, or I think their summer home.
Well, you're, you're trying to make exceptions is what you're doing.
I'm trying to not capture. The. The little minor things that, that, what this is, the intent here is that, in my mind anyways. Is that you've got commercial use. In a residential area and you could call whoever you want, say, you know, but that's. You're buying a piece of property right in the middle of somebody's neighborhood and making a resort out of it and. And that's what I believe this. Ordinance is, is designed to address. It's not designed to address the little old lady that had a cabin behind her house. That rented it out, worried about the same families for the last twenty years. I, I'm not interested chasing after that. I'm not interested chasing after somebody renting a couple of rooms in their house.
And part of it is to slow this down. I've talked to two different realtors who have said things like. They get, they get potential buyers, call them and the first question is, do you have an ordinance or not? They don't even ask what's in it. They do, they just, like, you know, they say you don't have an ordinance, you know, they're interested. I mean, that would immediately, just have one on the books would deter some of this. Once you get something passed.
Our realtor told the same thing. They were trying to sell a house in our, in our situation. And they said, they had six people inquiring, six out of eight were asking for short term rentals. Were short term, six buyers were.
I had a call last week, guy, he said, about to buy a piece of property. He said, I don't see where you have a short term rental ordinance and. I'm, I'm going to buy this, it's two lots together. It was a house on one. He wanted to put a fifth will on the next side to stay in when they weren't there. And I said, well. I don't know about the fifth wheel thing. And he said, well, I already told I can't do that. And I said, well. Short term rental's coming. I don't know to what extent. And if you're buying that property based on renting it out to pay for it. You might want to. Think hard on that because I don't know if you're going to get a license to that. But, you know, it's up to you. If you, if it's a good deal, buy it. But otherwise, just keep in mind, there's, there is one coming. And it, every day I'm getting either an email or calls.
Yeah, you think you got a hundred, I bet it's two or three times that right now.
And the growth of that, if it doesn't.
It is probably going to be quadrupled.
It is growing exponentially. I think that, that we, it's, we need to move on this. And so. You know what, and, and as far as having, you know, if you disagree with the thousand feet. You know, I think our board's willing to listen to any. Anything you got to say. I mean, we passed this, this committee to come up with the ordinance in the first place. You know, so.
I mean, I, I came on late to this. This was, you know, well down the road before I came on the, on the commission, but. I do see a difference too. I have some neighbors in my neighborhood who rent it one, two weeks a year. Have other ones that are full time, four or five families every week all summer long. They're not, they're not the same news, you know, it's not the same issue. Just isn't.
Yeah, they bought it to rent it and they may spend one or two weeks themselves here.
Yeah.
And use it as an.
But in most places, it's, I mean, there's some people who rent it one or two weeks a year, go on vacation somewhere else, you know, and they're here, that's their, it's their. Home most of the summer versus ones who've never, have not seen in years now.
Yeah, I could see an exception for some.
Does it run to one, one week a year or some?
Less than twenty one days a year or something.
Well, you, you were still in there today when the tail end of our commentary got to the. Limit, you know, talking about limitations of, on this ordinance of only allowing people to use. Their house.
So many.
S T R for only a couple of weeks a year and I'm, my feeling on that is like, if you're going through all this policing ordinance. And making a pay. And go through all these steps and only allowing them to use it two weeks, you might as well just. Wrap that up and just make a different rule in the zoning and. Stay away from it and then just go after enforcement on anybody that violated that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but.
You're already limited.
It's not making any sense, you know, I mean, to me, that's.
I, I, I don't.
It has no merit.
I left that out of there intentionally because I, I didn't see how that was, if you're going to. Do all this, then why limit on this side? It doesn't make sense, but. I'm only one vote.
Well, thanks for keeping it moving forward.
But I, I appreciate your input. I appreciate everybody's input on what we got and what we're still doing. So you disagree with it, speak up to the board, don't, you don't have to, just tell me, tell, tell them. And I've. I mean, if you want, because we're not meeting till September. If you want. Those to come back individually to you for review and.
Well, let me ask you this, you're sending this to Hess. Are you going to incorporate? Your, your ideas, your changes.
Already in it.
You've done a, a copy of that.
Brian asked me to make them and I did today and he's got it now.
Okay, can we get a copy? Yeah, that's what I'll. I hope you named it something different or whatever, so we.
Put Tom Barber in it.
No, I'm talking about.
Oh, it's A, I just read it. I put A three on there is what I did.
Yeah, okay, if you want our input, if we could see it, that'd be.
Yeah, I'll send it to everybody.
Once, once it goes to. The attorney for review. You would prefer that to come back to us?
No, I just ask him if he did or not. I mean, we'll. Have time to comment, like I'm saying, you know. I. I've never done this before, so I'm, but I, you know, definitely is going to be at least one public hearing, maybe two. Coming back to the plant commission. Can happen during that, that interim. I don't see this. coming back to the planning commission, uh, can happen during that, that interim. I don't see this getting enacted until, um, sometime later in the year. It's, well, it's gonna be well into the fall or winter. By the time we get to a final product, I think. But, uh, I don't know procedurally if you would prefer it coming back. I'd rather have you look at it before it was a public comment. Personally.
I think Hess is probably gonna, and, and one of the big concerns is that thousand foot thing. I, I think there could be something. It's just a matter of what that number is, but I think he's gonna come back with some, that and a couple of other things that are a point of concern and say, this, this is a, an issue that you're gonna, probably gonna wanna tweak.
Right.
Significantly in some fashion and.
Well, you say you guys have identified properties. Have you mapped them?
Yeah.
Okay. Then you might wanna take those maps and apply your thousand foot thing and just see.
We already know we got a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, cause.
Why am I here? Why am I here?
Well, you're asking me, you, you want me to tailor it to, to them? Or do you want them to tailor to us? I don't, uh, you know, it's no different with the numbering thing. Jim Osling had it, you know, he's got kind of a wise approach to it. He said, you know what? If there's a hundred and fifty of them out there right now and our goal, you know, the, looking at, there was a, I think I shared it with you, the MSU.
Yeah.
Video, pretty informative. It, it was actually done last year and it's about short-term rentals. We came across that after I got the, the, the draft from, from here. But anyways, uh, them and then also reading, uh, Grand Travers, uh, they basically were saying, if you're gonna set a limit, base it on something. And so they, they had done a study and they came up with a two and a half percent rule for residential properties. That was the same thing that they used, I think in East Bay or someplace over in Traverse City. So two and a half percent, we've got thirty-three hundred fifty-four improved properties in residential in Garrish Township. So three percent, which puts you at about a hundred right there. So a hundred and fifty is gonna be significantly over that. If you, if we said, okay, we'll take, we'll take in the hundred and fifty and we'll let them, we'll, we'll give them a license, but our goal would be to have only a hundred. And basically, uh, as, as he used the term attrition, if somebody drops off, sells, whatever, you know, you, you don't, you got a waiting list, but they, you're not gonna get on, you're not gonna take the hundred and fiftieth because now we're down a hundred and forty-nine. We're gonna work our way down before you're gonna get a new license.
So basically you're saying you'll hypothetically issue a hundred and fifty licenses, but put a limit in the ordinance of only a hundred.
And we may have to, we may have to accommodate, uh, you know, non-conformance for the thousand foot to get until we can then effectively fix that. I, I, I've never done this, but I'm just trying to apply some that's logic to it.
I had a con, uh, a condo in Ann Arbor and it was essentially a co-op and we converted to a condo thing. And then I rented mine out when I was deployed and stuff. And they were trying to get away from, they wanted to do the same thing. Ultimately, they wanted to get all the rentals out. So they put timeframes on there and then when you sold and they put criteria. So there was a process that was done that could be done similar. You know, whether it's a five-year thing or a ten-year or a three-year, you can.
They regulated it until they made it impossible, is what you're saying.
Right. Yeah. I mean, it's like, okay, I could do it to a immediate family member or somebody else. And it got to be, okay, you're not living there now. You got it. I just sold it and and, and so, but they had it initially, they had people that were running out and there's a certain percentage they could rent out. And then when they did that, they said, we're, we're, we're taking that number and we're paring it down. So they ultimately wanna get to essentially zero. I don't know what it.
You know, the, you know, the ordinance is what we're working on, but there's gonna be policy and administration of that.
Yeah.
We've gotta deal with at the township level.
When you get into all those numbers, I think that's a policy kind of thing. You don't spell.
It is. That's exactly right. That's. No, it's not in the ordinance. It just refers in their ordinance to, you know, the township may set those limits. So, uh, I, I focused because a lot of the rhetoric that was coming back to me was regarding administration. I said, we can't, we can't address that until we've at least come to terms with what we wanna have in the ordinance. So, um, we've got some ideas on how to, to do this, but again, I've never done this before. It's just new to me. It's new to a lot of people. Uh, so, yeah.
Well, thanks for moving it forward. Appreciate it.
Anything else for the good of the order?
If none, I'd motion to adjourn.
We've had a couple of ZBAs this last month. We got three more scheduled, two, uh, on the twenty-third. And we got another one that's got scheduled today for the fourth of August. So there a lot more than last year. We only had one in August.
Good to be busy, huh, Mike? Meetings, minutes, meals and more of the same.
Okay. So our next regular meeting will be September eleventh. I mean, our agenda hasn't been this light in months, maybe a year.
Yeah, and we're still two hours.
Exactly.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. September eleventh is the, I'm the new state.